Just FYI, Chris, Tim's not gonna be with us tonight, so. Okay, we'll bring tonight's, the May twenty-fourth city council meeting to order. Is there a motion on tonight's agenda?
Make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Urkel.
Hi.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mundell.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye, and that motion passes. Items on tonight's presentations and public hearings, public hearing for off sale liquor license Route sixty-five discount liquors, Jack. You're on mute, Jack.
Might as well get started off normal. Staff is recommending that council conduct a public hearing regarding an off sale liquor license for Route sixty-five Discount Liquors, Inc. As required by the East Bethel City Code, Article Three, Intoxicating Liquor, Section six dash fifty-five. For notification requirements, the date for this public hearing was published in the Anoka County Union and is scheduled for tonight's meeting. At the conclusion and close of the public hearing, council has requested to consider the approval of an off sale liquor license for Route sixty-five Discount Liquors, Doing Businesses Route sixty-five Discount Liquors, located at one eight four five three Highway sixty-five northeast. The applicant is the same owner, but has changed the license name from Slaw Industries, Route sixty-five Discount Liquors, Inc. All application materials, completed background checks and fees have been submitted for the off sale liquor license. Final approval of the license will be contingent on approval of the State Commissioner of Public Safety. Approval of council is required prior to action by the state, and we have to send that in to them before they can act on it. Staff recommends conducting a public hearing to receive comments on the off sale liquor license for Route sixty-five Discount Liquors, Inc. Doing Business as the Same. Once the public hearing is closed and there are no reasons to deny the license, staff recommends council consider approval of the off sale liquor license for Route sixty-five Discount Liquors, Doing Business as the Same, located at one eight four five three Highway sixty-five, East Bethel, Minnesota, five five zero zero one.
With that, we will open the public hearing for the off sale liquor license for Route sixty-five Discount Liquors, Doing Business as Route sixty-five Discount Liquors, at one eight four five three Highway sixty-five. Jack, did we receive any public comment?
No public comment, nor anyone requested to appear before the council on this.
Okay, seeing we have no interest on this tonight, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the off sale liquor license for Route sixty-five Discount Liquors, DBA, Route sixty-five Discount Liquors.
I second.
Motion's made in second, discussion.
Jack, has there, has there ever been any complaints against this business?
Uh, no, there was a license violation several, probably about six or seven years ago, but that's it. It was just a minor thing. But we'll have to say that Mr. Schlossman is running a good business there. He keeps everything under control and he's a good corporate citizen.
All right, thank you, Jack.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mundell.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye, and that motion passes. Next, let us public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff is recommending that council conduct a public hearing regarding an off sale liquor license for Aberdeen Liquors, Inc. As required by the East Bethel City Code, Article Three, Intoxicating Liquors, Section six dash fifty-five. For notification requirements, the public hearing for this date was published in the Anoka County Union and is scheduled for tonight's meeting. At the conclusion of the public hearing, council has requested to consider the approval of an off sale liquor license for Aberdeen Liquors, Inc. Doing Businesses Wayne's Liquors, located at two one three four zero Aberdeen Street, Northeast. The applicant is the new owner of the business which previously held an identical license. All application materials, completed background checks and fees have been submitted for the off sale liquor license. Final approval of the license would be contingent on approval of the State Commissioner of Public Safety. Approval of council is required prior to action by the state. Staff recommends conducting the public hearing to receive comments on the off sale liquor license for Aberdeen Liquors, Inc. Doing Businesses Wayne's Liquors. Once the public hearing is closed and if there are no reasons to deny the license, staff recommends council consider approval of sale liquor license. Aberdeen Liquors, Inc. Doing Businesses Wayne's Liquors, located at two one three four zero Aberdeen Street, Northeast, East Bethel, Minnesota, five five zero one one.
With that, we'll open the public hearing for the off sale liquor license of Aberdeen, or Aberdeen Liquors, Doing Business as Wayne's Liquors, right, at two one three four zero Aberdeen Street. Jack, was there any interest in this hearing today?
No, no one expressed any interest to speak at the public hearing.
Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and entertain a motion. Hi, Jack, may I ask a question first, just to be sure? In your, maybe I've overstated it, in your write-up, you stated Aberdeen Liquors, Doing Business as Wayne Liquors? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Because the public hearing notice doesn't say that. It says Aberdeen Liquors, Doing Businesses Aberdeen Liquors. I just want to make sure we get this right.
Let me see.
The application says Wayne's. Doing Business.
It'll be the new owners that be listed, but it'll be Doing Businesses Wayne's.
Okay, so when we make a motion, just make sure we note that correct. All right, is there a motion on here tonight?
I'll make a motion to approve the off sale liquor license for Aberdeen Liquors slash Wayne Liquors located at two one three four zero Aberdeen Street, Northeast, East Bethel, Minnesota.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, discussion. Seeing none, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mundell.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye, and that motion passes. On to our sheriff's report. Randall Orlando, good evening.
Good evening. So I have the report for April of two thousand and twenty-one, and just so you know, it is relatively short. But I guess that's, in a way, that's a good thing to know that, you know, we're not having a lot of major significant incidents happen in the city. But so for DW, there were two arrests in April. Both arrests were the result of driving conduct. One male suspect was traveling southbound in the northbound lanes of Highway sixty-five. Upon being stopped, the male stated he thought he was in Columbia Heights and had followed a coworker to make sure she made it home safely. Suspect claimed to not have had anything alcoholic to drink, however, he smelled of an alcoholic beverage and failed field sobriety tests. The male did take an intoxicilizer test, which revealed a blood alcohol content of point one five. The other arrest was a male who failed to stop for the semaphore at Highway sixty-five in Viking Boulevard, causing the vehicle directly in front of a deputy to slam on their brakes in order to not collide with the suspect vehicle. The suspect driver failed to maintain his lane of travel and was stopped. The driver failed field sobriety tests and had a blood alcohol content of point zero eight. So it's a good thing on that second one that the vehicle that was traveling north was able to stop before actually getting into some sort of a crash with the intoxicated driver. Driving after revocation and obstruct legal process. Deputy Mobrattan was called on a vehicle that had a female suspect yelling at children, and the caller reported they did not know who this female was. Multiple calls became, began coming in on this female. Deputy Mobrattan and Deputy Collier made contact with the female, who stated she was in the area looking for her stolen motorcycle. She did not have a reason why she thought the stolen motorcycle was in this particular neighborhood. The female did have a revoked driver's license. Her address on her license showed Tochaska. As Deputy Mobrattan tried to get the female suspect to exit her vehicle, she rolled the window up and pulled the door shut, locking it. She was also yelling obscenities at the deputies and neighbors who were outside. The deputies advised the go do something with them, sorry. Advised the female, she needed to open the window, which she refused to do. They ended up having to break the window to get her out of the vehicle. She was transported to jail. Suspicious incident. Deputy CD was contacted by a male who stated he had a package delivered from Amazon that contained some anti-itch spray for his dog. The male saw a vehicle pull up and a person take the package off his front porch through his Ring camera. Deputy CD then received an email follow-up from the male, who advised it was his neighbor who took his package, believing that he had left with his fifth wheel camper and did not want the package to be stolen. So all was well, which you rarely hear about when you hear about stolen packages off front porches. That's all I had for the, the month, just calls that are happening right now. You know, with the warmer weather that we're getting, we do get a lot of loud music, loud party disturbing complaints, especially over the weekends. So people who are outside and having their small three by three recreational fires, sometimes music gets a little bit out of hand and you don't realize how sound travels in the quiet of the night. So there is an increase in those types of calls. Also, the dog's running off leash, so by ordinance, if your dog is not restrained by a leash or under your voice command on your property, you need to make sure that they are on some sort of leash, not running the neighborhood. We do get a lot of calls on dogs running loose. So try and keep your dogs contained as best you can. And then the only other thing we had, and it happened this month, but I thought it was relevant. If you've watched the news at all, there's been an increase in catalytic converters are being taken off of vehicles. And we actually had a theft up on Coon Lake, up on the Coon Lake Landing, or the parking lot for Coon Lake, where a guy had gone fishing, and while he was out in his boat fishing, there was a vehicle that came and we got a call on a suspicious vehicle, but it was gone by the time we got there. And then the owner of the truck came back and started it up, and his catalytic converter had been sawed off while it was parked in the parking lot. So just encouragement, if you, you know, if you're out there and you see suspicious vehicles or something just doesn't look right, you know, give our deputies a call because this is unfortunately happening all over the Twin Cities. And you should be able to go fish on a lake without having to worry about that kind of damage being done to your vehicles.
It's a very expensive replacement, and you have to replace it.
Yeah, 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 you have to. You can't get away with not doing it. But I thought it's pretty brazen for people to be doing it in, you know, during a, you know, broad daylight during the week, so just so you're aware.
You see someone walking around with a cordless sawzall, that's, that is a red flag, so.
Yeah, and they do, they do it at night, too. So it's not, you know, it's not, probably more so at night than daytime, but yeah.
Questions for Shelley tonight? I have one, and these two previous public hearings made me think of it, and Brian's question. Seems to me it's been a long time since we've had to deal with any failed compliance checks, either alcohol or tobacco. I assume the sheriff's office is still doing those.
Yes, we are. Yes, I believe they just did them probably a month and a half ago or so, and we did not have any businesses fail, but let me double check on that and I'll let you know for sure.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not being critical of the fact we're not finding any. I mean, I think it's a good sign. I just want to know whether we had stopped. Or for some reason.
I think during the initial last year, because we typically do them in the spring, and I think, well, I shouldn't say that, I guess we do them in the spring or fall or winter or summer. But I think last year with COVID shut down, they were basically bald. But I'm, I want to say we did them about a month or a month and a half ago, but I'll double check tomorrow when I go to work. Yeah, we really haven't had issues, I know, with any underage selling in East Bethel in quite a few years now.
That's very good. Yeah, there was, there was a time where you had a rash of it, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Shelley tonight? All right, thank you and have a party plus an evening.
Okay, thank you, you too.
On to our fire department report. Chief DeCharme, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and tonight I'll give you the report on April of two thousand and twenty-one. Last month, we did have two major fires in the city. One was a garage fire on Coon Lake Beach that I was one of the first ones on the scene, and I solicited three civilians to help. And they did a great job, and we were able to confine the fire to the garage. It was a detached double garage. Although the garage was a total loss, we were able to limit the exposure damage. The other fire that we had was in Village Green, we had a house that started on fire through what we call drop-down fire. It was, it actually started as a stove fire inside and went through the exhaust venting for the range and got to the outside. We were able to extinguish that, although there was heavy smoke damage throughout the house. We did ask Red Cross to step in and help the owner until they were able to get their feet on the ground. Overall, in April, we had sixty-six calls, and forty-seven of those were medical related. We had five vehicle crashes. We had three alarm calls. And I want to thank the residents for this, our burning and, and smoke calls. Illegal burning calls were way down, we only had two. And then with the grass fires and one other mutual aid call, there were six total fires. So, you know, once again, I think I've said before, you know, our numbers, our call volume is exceeding last year's record number. And, you know, I would suspect that we're probably gonna be close to another record again this year. There was one call that the mayor and I had talked about, when I first logged on, dealt with the golf car and juvenile riding on the golf car fell off and, and hit the, the child hit their head. Actually had some possible very serious injuries. And I'm just passing out a warning to everybody. I know a lot of people in the city and a lot of people around the lake, Coon Lake, have golf cars, but be careful with them because they, they can be dangerous. Mayor? I think you're on mute.
Yeah, now we're not. Anything for, questions for Chief tonight?
Chief, with the recent rains, how's the grass fire danger sign looking?
Well, we are looking good. We are off restrictions, the DNR ended restrictions. That still means that if you're gonna do burning, you need to get a permit. And you can either call City Hall or stop by City Hall to get that permit. And remember, the permit, you can start burning at six PM, six in the evening, and you gotta be done by eight o'clock in the morning. And I get a lot of questions as to why you can't burn during the day. And the main reason is the humidity is normally higher at night and the winds are lighter. And, and that's, that's why the DNR imposes that type of a restriction. Now, you can have recreational fires. But I want to remind everybody, recreational fire is three by three by three, three feet wide, three feet high, three feet deep. So, an example, it was the other day, we had a report of somebody burning in their backyard, and it was a thirty by thirty fire going with logs and trees and stuff like that. And the homeowner said, well, I was gonna cook hot dogs over that. And that doesn't count. I mean, you know, let's, let's all be reasonable here. And unfortunately, that individual did end up with a ticket from, from the sheriff's office, but you know, if you're gonna do that kind of burning, go to City Hall, get your burning permit. And if, if you need some help, then, you know, when it's gonna be safe to burn, or if your area is safe to burn, you can give the fire department a call. We come out and look at a lot of burn piles before people actually burn them.
With fishing opener, has there been any concerns with boaters or individuals on the lakes? How is the lake temperature looking right now as far as warming up and potential hypothermia?
Well, I had a report that the water temperature was around seventy degrees. I did not measure it, which was a huge increase from about a week ago, ten days ago, when I was struggling to get up to sixty. So, you know, hypothermia will still kick in if you're in that water too long, but at least you got a little bit of a chance. As for fishing opener, we didn't have any calls or calls for service or calls for assistance, which is always good. We did have a call of a possible airplane crash in Coon Lake, but that was somebody who was just landing their plane and then getting ready to take off again.
Very good.
When I saw the call, I didn't see it, so. Yeah, I mean, the, the last couple of weekends have been a lot less busy than it was last year. And, and the lake must be warm enough because there were quite a few people swimming in it on, on Saturday, so. But I think, I think we're good there, so. Hey, any other questions for Chief tonight? All right, Mark?
Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion tonight?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Discussion?
I have a question regarding the consent agenda. It's just something I'm not really understanding. Why did we have those special public hearings for the liquor licenses there, and then there's liquor and tobacco stuff here? What's the difference? I, I, I'm just confused on that, so I'd just like clarification.
Suzanne, the public hearings were for new licenses. The consent agenda is for renewal of existing licenses. So in the situation we had here, we did have two owners, but what they've done, they've changed their names, their legal names. So a public hearing is required when that happens. But just for renewals, we can put that on the consent agenda because they've had license before and are not changing legal names or anything that affect the requirement of reapplying for the license.
So the tobacco license is a renewal, too? It just says application. Okay, thanks. I didn't understand that. Thank you, though.
Okay, I would like to pull items B, C, and D, like the consent agenda. Is there any other discussion? Okay, to the motion, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
On the consent agenda, Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mundell.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye, and that motion passes. So items B and C are meeting minutes from May third for the special meeting and a work meeting. Reason I pull them is, we had a discussion in our last council meeting that I brought up that the way that our votes were being recorded in the minutes were incorrect, and we're not reflecting the roll call aspect of it. And, and these minutes have that same problem. So, so those can be, I like to table those actually till the next meeting so they can be corrected. And then, before I make a motion on that, item D is the meeting minutes from May tenth. And if you go through those minutes, Jack, there's, there's some yellow highlighting that's in there. It looks like they had questions that weren't answered. And then also specifically on page forty-five of our packet, which is page eight of the May tenth minutes, item seven G one, titled Lever Street, but then the discussion is far, something far different. It has to do with MINDOT. So that needs to be corrected as well. So I, I'd like to make a motion to table items B, C, and D of the consent agenda. Is there a second? Motion made in second. Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mundell.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye, and that motion passes. Completes our consent agenda. There's no new business. On to the department reports, finance, Jack.
Item seventy-one. Consider defeasance of the two thousand thirteen A and two thousand eight A bond issue. The City Finance Committee and staff met on May sixth to review and discuss the two thousand twenty-two budget inputs and assumptions. The Finance Committee also discussed the city's general fund balance, the city financial performance for the past two years, and the city's overall debt service requirements. As part of the discussion, two city bond issues, the two thousand thirteen A and the two thousand eight A bonds that are currently callable and eligible to be paid in full are viewed. The two thousand thirteen A bond issue is the former two thousand five A bond, which is the refinancing of the Fund, Fund Fire Station One and the City Storm Warning System. The remaining principal balance on the two thousand thirteen A bond issue is five hundred and ninety thousand dollars. The two thousand eight A bond was issued to fund the cost of the purchase of the Castle Towers wastewater treatment plant. The remaining principal balance on the two thousand eight A bond issue is eighty thousand dollars. If these issues are to be paid in full on July first, two thousand and twenty-one, the payoff amounts for both bonds would be five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars in effect. The interest for paying these two issues in full with this date is sixty thousand, three hundred and forty dollars over the remaining term of the bonds. The city had a general fund balance of three million, four hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars year-end, two thousand and twenty, or fifty-seven percent of the two thousand and twenty-one general fund expenditure budget. City has an internal fund balance policy. The city should maintain a fund balance of at least forty percent of general fund expenditure. They currently have one million, twenty-four thousand dollars over and above that requirement. To redeem the two bond issues, the city would use approximately five hundred and twenty-eight thousand of the general fund balance to date, leaving two million, eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars in this account, or forty-eight percent of the two thousand and twenty-one general fund expenditures at year end. should there be no more other major fund transfers. In conjunction with the discussions with the city finance committee, staff recommends council consider approving resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-two, redemption of the two thousand eight A, two thousand thirteen A bond issue on July first, twenty twenty-one.
Is there a motion on this matter tonight?
I would like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-two redemption of the two zero zero eight eight and two zero one three A bond issues July first, twenty twenty-one.
A second.
Motion made in second, discussion. I think we had a long discussion at the finance committee about this. And I think it made a lot of sense. We've got a, a higher, a higher reserve than, than we need to. And we're gonna, we're gonna spend down these bonds and it's gonna be significant cost savings for return of the bond. So, I think it's very good use of these reserve funds.
Yeah, big cost savings and, and, uh, Jack, what, do we have just two more bonds left on the books?
That, that, that's correct. In twenty fourteen, there were seven bond issues that were outstanding. All of those have been retired early. I think it's a tribute to city council and their prudent fiscal policy that would be, been able to pay those bonds off before their maturity date. We've saved quite a bit of money and interest on that. So, the two remaining bonds are the, what was the original? The R Z and B A bonds for the water and sewer project. It'll take a little while to do that. We're monitoring the situation on those two. And there may be a chance to refinance those next year. From what we've been told, if current market conditions continue, we could save approximately a million dollars in cost over those terms too. So, that's something we'll keep a close eye on and hopefully we'll be able to present a refinance for those two bonds next year.
And was your, correct me if I'm wrong, was there a discussion that come twenty twenty-four, that those two bonds potentially could be paid off?
Uh, it's, no, it's, it's unlikely because of the amount that those bonds still have outstanding or like about sixteen million dollars. So, our, I think there's conversations centered, centered around our ability to refinance those and get a lower interest rate and achieve that savings.
All right.
Hey, any other discussion? Hearing none.
What is our interest rate on them right now?
Suzanne, I would have to look and see that interest rates on a sliding scale. Generally, the way it was set up, the longer it goes, they raise a little bit. But I can get back to you and let you know exactly what they are. I'm gonna say they're around three to four percent.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Nelson, can you take roll call vote, please?
Councilman, Councilmember Urkel. Councilmember Beck. Councilmember Mundell.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye, and that motion passes. Onto our city administrator, Jack.
Item seven G one, June work meeting. Our monthly work meeting is scheduled for June seventh, twenty twenty-one at seven P M. Items recommended for council discussion and review could include, but may not be limited to the following. The two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-six roads capital improvement schedule and a discussion on the return to live meetings. And I'm gonna give a, a further update on that. But that's something we may want to consider even talking about some tonight. Council can make a decision, but there've been a lot of changes from executive orders from the governor. Through with the decrease in COVID cases, so. If you, if you wanna get into the, that report now, we can do that to try to determine what we wanna do about the work meeting.
Jack or Chris, you know when, I, I thought there was a date announced when the governor is planning to rescind his order. Is that true?
The, the, the governor's emergency declaration powers expire on June fourteenth. Hope that will be renewed again. But the governor on May the sixth announced a three-step plan to ease restrictions on COVID. The May sixth announcement made mask requirements for outdoor dining events and other get-together or a end, except for larger events with five hundred or more people. And also eliminated was the state established closing time for bars, restaurants, and food and beverage services and other places, and other places of the public accommodation. Beginning May the twenty-eighth, all remaining capacity and distancing requirements for all indoor gatherings, including bars and restaurants, will be removed. Face covering requirements will remain for indoor and outdoor gatherings with five hundred or more people. There will be no new safety requirements for businesses, although they must have a plan to keep employees and customers safe. And as of July first, Minnesota, if Minnesota achieves a seventy percent vaccine rate for those sixteen and older, the statewide mask mandate will end before July first. But regardless of the way the last executive order reads, it will end July first regardless. Still, all workplaces and restaurants and other places can continue to have their own masking policies. And also, businesses will have the option to continue mandating masks if they choose. And local governments will have the authority to continue their own COVID nineteen restrictions. So, those are the latest things that came from the governor's executive order on May the sixth. And again, that peacetime emergency declaration powers that he have expires on June the fourteenth. However, it could be renewed again.
Chris, do you have anything to add?
One item, Mayor Voss and, and council members, there were some amendments to Minnesota's open meeting law that were signed into law also on May sixth. And the amendments sort of provide a blueprint for an off-ramp for in-person meetings. If you're meeting virtually pursuant to Minnesota thirteen D point zero two, which is the interactive technology exception to in-person meetings, those meetings really can't continue past July first of this year. So, if council members were to continue under that provision to meet virtually, they'd have to meet the criteria of either being in the active military or, or have a health exemption and, and basically a doctor's note saying that it'd be not a good idea to, to be meeting in person. East Pethle has been meeting under the pandemic exception, which is similar but slightly different. We haven't been meeting in person due to the declared pandemic and the mayor's and the governor's emergency declaration. But it does look like July first is, is a noteworthy date, at least with regard to the amendments to the open meeting law.
So, I think question I wanna ask council tonight is, do we wanna wait two weeks until we have a work meeting to discuss this? Or do you wanna take it on tonight? We got a very short agenda, so.
Well, I, I guess I'd make the suggestion if we are going to go back to live meetings, we have our first one for the June seventh work meeting that will be, call it a test run to see how it goes for staff and make sure video is, and everything's up and running. And just kind of a test run to get back into live meetings. That's my thing.
I agree. I agree.
And I think the, you know, the fact that, you know, I'm not sure if all of us are vaccinated, but I know most of us are getting vaccinated, so I don't think there's any concern there. So, with, with the, the office, so it sounds, if I, if I understood it correctly, on, whatever the twenty, the, the mask mandate for indoors goes away, is that correct? In terms of our, our office staff, okay. So, does that mean we start, or we can start taking down the, and the Plexiglas too?
We, we, we can. Again, the, the city council can leave those restrictions in place should they think they're appropriate. But if not, then the masking requirements go away for those crowds of five hundred or less.
Mr. Nelson, do any of the virtual meeting rules apply to any of the commissions of planning, parks, E D A?
Uh, yes, Mayor and Councilmember Mundell, they apply to all of, of those. So, if it's a determination that would be made by the council, but those would be in person going forward too.
Okay, I guess they'll have to be, be made to be aware. And I guess that could be brought up at their next meeting that, that by, is it June thirty-first, July first, that after July first meetings, if I stay alive, will have to be in person?
July first does seem to be a significant date under the amendments to the open meeting law about moving back to in person.
Yeah, it sounds like we have no choice by July first, so.
Yeah.
So, I mean, and I guess, I guess what my suggestion would be is, you know, if we go back to live meetings, we'll be rescinding the, the local emergency act. And with that, meetings go back live. And, and if we have any commission members that, that don't feel comfortable attending the June meeting, I mean, I think that's a free pass, you know, so. Because by July, we would have, we would have to be going live. And, and I think as we discussed before, is, is we're gonna stay consistent between the, we should stay consistent between the council, the commission meetings, so.
Well, I'd say if council wants to lead the way and going back to live, and it's our, if it's our decision, go back, that's our decision. I guess with the commissions, they only have one meeting a month. So, it'd probably be, they'd have about a month and, a month and a week to prepare for. So, they just have one meeting before July's meeting, I think, roughly.
Well, I, I guess what I'm suggesting is, is that, you know, when we go live, when council goes live, everyone goes live, a, all the commissions. And, and read, and I'm comfortable in saying that. In fact, if I remember right, Jack, there was only one member out of each of the commissions that had an objection or concern, and the rest of the commission was fine.
That, that's correct. The only exception was the Parks Commission. And there were two members that never responded to the poll for what their preference was. So, the Parks Commission had one person that had some concerns. The E D A had one person that requested, thought we ought to wait sixty days. We said sixty days will just about be up when we have our next E D A meeting. And the Planning Commission had one person that probably had the, some of the more serious concerns. But with the fact that we are going to have to go back to live meetings because we're not gonna meet the tests for virtual meetings, it's not gonna make much difference. The Planning Commission is on the fourth Tuesday of this month. That can be virtual. Actually, the Planning Commission meeting is tomorrow night. So, they will, they will still be virtual and their next live meeting won't be almost till the end of June then.
Well, if that's the case, then I, then I would suggest that, you know, we rescind the, if we're gonna do this, we rescind the, the local emergency action effective the twenty-eighth. And, and then it's after a planning meeting anyway, so. And then we would be the first meeting, that, that first work meeting, so.
Okay.
Tim's not here, but, but I know in discussions with him, he's comfortable going back to live meetings, so.
And as, as I understand this, since this is an emergency declaration for the virtual meetings, it doesn't take council action. However, if we want a vote on it, we could call a special meeting. If we choose to have a work meeting on the seventh, or we can call a special meeting on three days' notice at any time to consider a vote on the resis- decision.
Do you want to vote on this tonight?
We, we can vote on this tonight.
I suppose we can. So, do we, do we need a motion then?
I feel, Chris, do we, is it just me signing a, a, a recant?
Ordinarily, it, it would be just a mayor oral declaration. However, the declaration as written states that it will be rescinded by the, the council in full. So, to be consistent with the, the declaration, we should probably have a vote. I might suggest, you know, maybe going back to amend the agenda, add this, and then vote on, vote on it, so.
Well, let, let me ask it this, I, do we wanna vote on this tonight?
If we're here, rather than call a special meeting.
Okay, so. But we can, we can amend the agenda, amend the agenda right now.
It's a regularly noticed meeting, so the agenda can be amended.
So, I'll, I'll make a motion that we can amend the agenda to add G one A as a consideration of returning to live meetings and re-recension of the local emergency act effective May twenty-fourth.
Or twenty-eighth?
I'll second.
All right, sorry, May twenty-eighth, correct that. Thanks, Mark. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Shelley seconds, discussion.
I, I did have one question. Are there any public hearings, Jack, that have been noticed for, that would be outside of the notice period that, where the mailers have gone out noticing a virtual public hearing?
No, the only one that would be effective would be tomorrow night's planning commission meeting, and that would still be virtual.
Okay.
But for, I think you're asking for the July fourteenth meeting. Is there any public hearings that are scheduled for that?
There, there will be a public hearing scheduled for that for the T F one five district. That notice just went out today. Eller sent that out, but they just sent out a notice of a public hearing. I'd have to see how it's worded, if it's worded, if it's a virtual meeting. I think they could probably send another one out tomorrow. It only has to be those two weeks, so that would give us time to correct that.
Yeah, that, that would, that would be the only thing I have, making sure that we're, the public hearing notices make, are consistent with, with the meeting.
That, that, that's good. That's good catch, Chris. Any other discussion on the motion to amend the agenda? Hearing none. Mr. Nelson, can you take roll call vote?
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mundell.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye, that motion passes. Now on to agenda G one A, recension of, or recension of, of the local emergency act effective May twenty-eighth and return to live meetings.
Make a motion to rescind the local emergency act effective May twenty-eighth and to approve returning to live meetings starting with council's June work meeting scheduled for June seventh at seven P M.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. Hearing none. Mr. Nelson, can you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mundell.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye, and that motion passes. We got something to look forward to here. Hey, item, well, I guess back to item G one, we haven't finished that discussion of the work meeting agenda.
Oh, we just have, we're on the agenda, we have one item, roads capital improvement. Oh, we just have, uh, we're on the agenda, we have one item, roads capital improvement schedule, unless anybody has anything to add.
I'd like to add two things. I'd like to talk about gratitude farms again because, uh, about all the. Online complaints I've been reading and, um, discuss if they're valid or not valid and how we know. And, um. I wanted to talk about the ordinance that talks about containers, shipping containers. That's all I wanna add.
Well, I think, I think where Brian was going with this is that. Right now, we'd only have the, the, the road C I P, which is something we can handle at the regular council meeting. Um, and to avoid having this work meeting. Is it Suzanne, and is that something, can, can you put off those two items? But I honestly think those discussion items are gonna be short, and if you have questions, I, I would. I encourage you to talk with Jack first, cause so staff is. You know, prepared on, on, on what your questions are there, so.
Yeah, I can talk to Jack first and I can put it off as long as, um. Actions on regarding the emails we got, um, can be put off. For the shipping container one.
Okay, I, I, I haven't received anything regarding either of these two items, so I'm not sure what you're referring to, but.
Okay.
So. Sounds like we can put off our work meeting. Jack, are you comfortable with that?
Absolutely.
So since this is a case and since it's a standing meeting, we need a motion to, to cancel our. Our, uh, June seventh work meeting.
Um, question, question right before we do that, in the previous motion for return live meetings. Uh, the work mean was given as the date for the first live meeting. Uh, would that just then be? The first available meeting that we could do it? Okay, just one of that clarification. Go ahead with your motion.
I will make a motion to cancel the work meeting scheduled for June seventh, twenty twenty one at seven P M.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mundell.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye, and that motion passes. On to the R F P for broadband internet service plan, Jack.
Included in your packet is a redlined draft of a request for proposals to develop a plan for the improvement. And extension of broadband internet service in the city of East Bethel. Attachment two is also a clean copied draft version. This draft is the culmination of discussions, reviews and edits at E D A meetings on March fifteenth, April nineteenth. And May seventeenth, twenty twenty one, and the city council meeting at May third, twenty twenty work meeting. Please note that the attached draft R F Ps include considerations of incentivizing private sector investment. Engaging in public-private partnerships, forming new cooperatives, or operating as a government utility. These options require capital participation, in some cases, operational systems beyond those of current I S Ps. Both of which would involve the city and areas that have been absent of previous public involvement. The broader component, component of the R F P plan would be the assessment of the city's broadband internet infrastructure, needs and goals of the system. Determining the role of the city in the execution of the plan. Coordination of the service providers, identifying funding sources for improvements and extensions. Describing the scope of work and project deliverables, qualifications and references of the submitters. Costs for the services. The end product of engaging a professional firm for development of an internet service plan would be the identification of areas that could be potentially served. Existing areas that require service upgrades, funding sources, city cost participation. And coordination of providers to partner their efforts and resources to implement the plan. Preparation of the plan would be an eligible E D A expense should a contract be awarded for the work. Other sources of money could be considered as the funding for this project should this item be presented for approval and award by city council. At this time, the cost for the preparation of the plan won't be known until we receive proposals from the firms submitting the R F Ps. We anticipate the cost could range from thirty-five to fifty thousand dollars. There may be some alternate options identified in the proposal the city may wish to consider. Selection of these items could add additional costs to the plan if approved. Twenty twenty E D A funds are available and appropriate for the preparation of a broadband internet plan for the city of East Bethel. The East Bethel E D A endorsed the request for proposals included in your attachment and by motion and unanimous vote of their members in attendance. Recommended the city council consider approval of the R F P and submission to the firms identified in attachment three for the consultant.
Your motion's ready.
I'll make a motion. For approval. Of the. Internet R F P. And submission to firms as identified in attachment three or requests for proposals.
Second.
First, made a second discussion. Jack, I assume this would be advertised on the league's site as well?
That's correct.
I have a question, um, regarding costs, we, would we come back and approve the costs or regardless of what the cost is, it's gonna just automatically approve it?
And what, what we would do Suzanne is once we got the proposals in, we would rank and evaluate those. And request that those firms be, appear for interviews. And they would be interviewed and the firm would be selected based not only on cost, but on qualifications and what their previous experience was. But the city council would have to approve the cost and the contract for any. Work that was done in this area.
Yeah, the, uh, the R F P is essentially just a help wanted ad.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Regular discussion. Hearing none, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Urkel.
Hi.
Councilmember Beck.
Hi.
Councilmember Mundell.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye, and that motion passes. On to Lever Street easement, Jack.
There have recently been concerns of use of an easement on the lots listed as A and B on Lever Street. As indicated in attachment one A and two in your packet by adjacent and property owners of interest. The concerns are centered around the utilization of this thirty-foot easement for vehicular use. This easement is used by some residents in the east front boulevard, Lever Street, Katie's Way neighborhood. As a means of access and shortcuts for A T Vs, golf carts, riding lawnmowers, parcel delivery vans and trucks, and personal licensed vehicles. As a way to access the lots on the private portion of this easement and to travel through this area. The public segment of the easement is also used by walkers as a means to complete a loop through these neighborhoods. And avoid Viking Boulevard as part of their route. Problems have arisen by the use of this access as dumping grounds for yard waste, blockage to prevent motorized vehicle use. And utili- utilization of the private portion of Lever Street to access properties that are not recognized as part of the private easement grant. These and the questions of ownership of the easement have led to disputes and confrontations of joint property owners along this easement and in this neighborhood. Prior to nineteen ninety-four, access to one nine three three five, one nine three one five, and. Two six five Lever Street, which are also identified as lots C, D and E respectively. This was a private drive for its entire length. The public section of Lever Street was dedicated by property owners Harland and Beverly Merkel and Jerry and Laura Lee as a public road in nineteen ninety-four. This dedication was recorded to the city but was never accepted as a street in the city's system. It's developed with Katie's Way in two thousand and one, the primary access to the properties listed above. Has been through this subdivision by way of one hundred ninety-fourth avenue and its connection with the Lever Street easement. The nineteen ninety-four easement has not been maintained by the city for vehicular access. Purpose. Complicating this matter, G I S directions for emergency services, law enforcement, and parcel delivery. Have directed the use of Lever Street as access to the addresses listed above. The city of East Bethel's fire chief has directed the sheriff's department and other emergency service providers. That access to one nine three, three five, one nine three one five, and one nine two six five Lever Street. Be by Isetta Street and one hundred ninety-fourth avenue. Directions for access to these properties from Google Maps is via one hundred ninety-fifth avenue, east front boulevard to Lever Street. City staff has contacted Google to redirect Lever Street access by way of Isetta Street and one hundred ninety-fourth avenue. This re- request was submitted to Google on March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, but it's still under their review. The city attorney has reviewed the nineteen ninety-four dedication and outlined his opinion of the ownership. In sum. With the city attorney's opinion, it appears that there is a public road easement over west thirty feet of the eleven-two lots that you're A and B. And it does not appear the public has any further easements, and to that extent, there are easements that are, they are private for the benefit of the individual parcels. Those would be for C, D and E or one nine three, three five, one nine three one five, and one nine two, six five Lever Street. City attorney will address council on the details of this matter at the conclusion of this report. To address the conflicts over use of the public portion of this easement and define its permissible forms of access. Following our options that could be means of consideration to address the issue. The use of the easement as is and define the city's maintenance policy regarding the public portion of the easements in a formal bidding property owners of decision. Allow restricted vehicular use of the easement as a no maintenance access. Only to one nine three three five, one nine three one five, and one nine two six five Lever Street addresses. For any rights of perpetual easements as provided in the deed of dedication as seen in attachment four of your packet. Or should any perpetual easement grants to lots C, D and E have application to the public easement over lots A and B? City could request the vacation of the private easement grant over the public portion of Lever Street north of one hundred ninety-fourth avenue. Contain such vacation, restrict the use of the public portion of the easement from the cul-de-sac on one hundred ninety-fourth avenue to east front boulevard. Only to non-motorized vehicular and pedestrian use or other purposes as appropriate. Or the city could consider the vacation of the public portion of the easement from the cul-de-sac. On one hundred ninety-fourth avenue to east front boulevard, lots A and B. Either in total or in part. While vacation of this easement is technically an option, it does not appear to be a reasonable solution to the problem, may have legal limitations. Relative to lots C, D and E. Or there may be other modifications. Are proposed by council to address application of this matter. Staff is seeking direction from council as to preferred option or recommendation to address this. And I'll let Chris brief the council now on some of the legal applications of the perpetual easement agreement contained in the deed of dedication.
Uh, thank you, Jack, uh, Mayor and council members, I'm happy to respond to any, uh, questions you have, may have on this, I. I do think, uh, the most instructive document might be page eighty-three. Of the packet, which, um. Uh, depicts this, um. On the map. Um. Essentially, what we have here is, uh. As highlighted in the, the light rectangle. Over what's labeled lots A and B, there's a thirty-foot, uh, public road easement, uh, that exists, those are. In the legal descriptions of both the lots, but it doesn't continue down to lots, uh, C, D and E. Uh, the easement document in your, in your packet, um. Is a, a private, uh, easement agreement that was entered into by the owners of lots A, B, C, D and E. And it's a, it's a little bit of an odd document, it's, it's written for the benefit of, of lot B. Uh, which I believe is, is Miss Wilkins' lot, and so. Um, there's a, uh, private easement right over the eastern, uh, or western, excuse me, thirty-three feet running from A all the way down. To D. Uh, for the benefit of lot D. And, uh, lots C, D and E have a maintenance agreement over the, the stretch of, of that easement, so there's. There is a private easement and, and public easement running nearly parallel. Over lots A and B, the private easement is three feet wider. But then the private easement continues down over lot C to lot D. Uh, it's kind of interesting that the, the private easement doesn't expressly continue on to lot. E, uh, but that might be. Whole host of examples, you know, it could be a, uh, easement by prescription, it could be a separate easement agreement, but, uh. Uh, lot D is included for maintenance, or lot E is included for maintenance in the nineteen ninety-four agreement, but it's, it's not listed as a beneficiary of that easement, which is, which is kind of interesting, but, um. Uh, the point being is that, um. Whether or not the public easement exists, uh. This roadway, um, i- if you can call it a roadway, this, um. Access easement, let's call it, uh. Would, uh, continue to exist regardless of whether the city took any action at all regarding the public portion of the. Of the easement. As far as, uh, ownership, um, you know, these are all privately owned lots, if there was no easement over them, the land underneath would just revert back to the property owner.
Questions?
I have a question of why. This has even come to council. Uh, this Lever Street has been there for ever and a day. There was a sign up on. A hundred, or east front boulevard for Lever Street. Um, the original home was lot D. So that, that whole stretch. Was made for, um, excuse me, lot E. Uh, was the original home, so that whole stretch was made for the original owner of lot E. And then lot D and C, uh, were added. But there was a sign Lever Street, uh, at east front boulevard, uh, for Lever Street. Um, it's always been a dirt road, uh, that's how, um. These residents would get their mail, get. You know, any, any sort of services. Uh, to this day, uh, there is still a lot of questions that, uh. Is unanswered, uh. The residents are still having issues getting mail, getting packages, uh, having to hunt down. The, uh, the pizza delivery man, the Amazon man, it, it's just, it's ridiculous. And so I would like to make a motion to just put the Lever Street sign back up. On east front boulevard. And leave it be as where the residents of lot E, D and C will maintain. The private or the public easement.
Motion on the table, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Discussion.
I think, um, that street needs to have its sign back and maybe even the city put some gravel down there and leave it as a road. Um, I think the property owners on lot A and B are trying to get some extended. Free property from the city, and I think that's just wrong. Um, it's the city property and I also, if we don't do this, the city's gonna be, experience some, uh. Legal expenses that we don't need to be involved in.
What, what legal expenses would those be?
Because those property owners have told me they've retrain, re-retained attorneys. And they're ready to sue. For their legal documents. Because they say they have legal documents that say that. And that their property is entitled to have that public road there.
It's not a.
Lever Street.
The easement.
The Lever Street as is is not an actual street.
It's.
It's listed on the G P S as an actual street.
G P S doesn't matter. You look at the legal documents. Mr. Nelson, is Lever Street an actual city street? Or is it an access for these residents to their homes?
Councilmember Mundell and council members, I would say that what we're calling Lever Street is just that. It's a private access easement. One of the, I believe it might be page eighty-four in your council packet is particularly instructive on this point. This is from the Anoka County Surveyor, updated in February twenty twenty-one. If you look on this map, it just shows the thirty-three foot easement along the western portion, the western thirty-three feet of what we're calling lots A and B, C and D. So there's no public roadway here. What we have is over lots A and B, the city has a thirty-foot roadway easement. So at some point theoretically, there could be a public road built over lots A and B, a public road established. But presently, that doesn't exist. How it got labeled Lever Street on certain maps, whether it's Google Maps or even some Anoka County highway maps, I have no idea. But that street doesn't exist. It's a private access to these lots.
So then my question, Chris, is if it's just a private road, then how do they have addresses being Lever Street? If it's not Lever Street, how is the federal post office recognizing them as Lever Street? And how are they getting their mail to Lever Street?
That's a very good question. I've seen no documents establishing this as a roadway. You know, there are some maps that indicate that there's Lever Street, but there's never been a formally established street. This must have just been an informal practice that took on over time. You know, perhaps it can even be considered a private roadway. I don't know if I'd go so far as to say that. But I've seen nothing to indicate that the city has ever established a roadway, nor does the city have any right to establish a roadway south of lot B, because the city has no roadway easement south of lot B.
I know all three residents have legal documentation for use of this easement, and I say we leave it as is, put the sign back up, and let it be as is, because like I said, this shouldn't even be brought up to counsel. This has been this way forever.
I can get behind you with leaving it alone. There's no contention on whether there is an easement or not. The problem I have is putting a road sign on East Front Boulevard, because this is not a street. What I would propose is we put a sign, Lever Street sign, at the end of the cul-de-sac at the paved access. We put a directional Lever Street sign on the corner of one ninety-fourth and Isetta, and we put a sign at East Front Boulevard, and it as a no maintenance access or something to that language. But I cannot, I cannot get behind putting a street sign on a street that is not a street.
Unfortunately, Brian, the cul-de-sac has any legal access to these properties.
Then let's make it legal.
Mr. Lee, when the Katie's Way came in, asked the developer to please leave it open. It was never legalized.
Mr. Nelson, how difficult would it be to make access off the cul-de-sac to the Lever Street access? How difficult would it be to make that a legal access?
Well, I think that goes to, again, page eighty-four of the packet. Shows where the, and we could take a look at the Katie's Way plat as well, but I think that's reflected on this map. It appears to go all the way to the property line there on the Katie's Way map, one ninety, one ninety-fourth. So there could be access to the public portion of the easement through one ninety-fourth. But I wouldn't say the city would have or would want to do anything that could direct traffic to the south, because those are, you know, those are private easement rights to lots C, D, and E.
Now, there's a sign up there that states private road already, but this is just labeling it so people know where these residents are.
That's why there was a Lever Street sign up on East Front Boulevard that was illegally taken down by an individual. And there was also a sign with a dead end sign along with it, and the post is still there to this day. I could walk there and show you.
I've seen the posts. I believe you, but that section is still not a street.
I'm gonna go back to something. Shelley, you talk about the Lever Street sign being illegally taken down. How do you know that was legally taken down? Because it was removed by city staff. So why was it illegally taken down?
And was it legally put up?
Who took it down?
City. Who put it up?
It wasn't taken down. It was knocked down by, someone drove into it.
Oh.
We talked about this.
What I don't understand is why this is even to city council. What has changed from nineteen ninety-four and before nineteen ninety-four to now? Why can't we just put it back the way it was and leave it be? Let the residents be.
If I'm not mistaken, city council didn't start this discussion. It was started by Ms. Brat at the public forum. So, I mean, it was brought to us. We didn't bring this up, so. Jack, what seems to be one of the bigger issues, and I can understand the frustration, is the fact that delivery and mail, whatever, have a hard time finding these homes. And you had in your write-up that we're trying to contact Google Maps to correct that mapping error. Have we heard anything from Google to fix that?
No, and I had Carrie check on that again. She checked on it last Wednesday when the write-up was being finished, and she checked on it today. But the only thing she can get from them is it's still under review. Again, though, Chief DeCharme is here tonight, and he has been in contact with the Anoka County Sheriff's Department, all the emergency responders, to make sure that they have in their system that this is the route to take Isetta Street and one hundred ninety fourth Avenue to access these properties. So he wishes to address that. I think there was also some claims that fire trucks could not negotiate that turn or get down Lever Street. Mr. DeCharme has been down there and found out that they can access Lever Street by one hundred ninety fourth Avenue. They cannot access it by Lever Street, because Lever Street is too narrow on the right of way, plus the canopy of trees is overgrown so much that we would really do significant damage to any of our fire equipment, and maybe some of it could actually get stuck on that shiver sand road if ground was in such a condition they couldn't travel on.
But one of the reasons those residents brought this up is because when they tried to clear, people were dumping leaves and branches and stuff on that easement. And when they tried to clear it, they were being harassed and bullied and threatened and all kinds of stuff like that by residents of those lots off of East Front Boulevard. So I think that was the big issue. And whoever is instigating those that, I don't know what the word is, the bullying confrontations. I think that's the big issue, and that's why they wanted to have it negotiated. And they said that somebody was trying to make it a path, and they're private property, and it's not private property. And those residents on those two lots shouldn't get free property either.
But isn't it their property, though, Chris?
It is their property. And, you know, to the extent that anyone is dumping on somebody else's property, you know, trespassing or littering or whatever it is, but it is private property. I will say over lots A and B, as depicted, there's two easements that exist. They exist over each other. One is a public easement that's thirty feet wide, and the other one is a private easement. Now, an easement just sits over the property. It remains their private property. Just certain people have a right of access to use that, and that's lots C, D, and E. So it is still their private property. It's really just a private right of access. Interestingly enough, written for lot D, but it appears to be inclusive of lots C and E as well.
And I presume that easement was born from these properties being locked, and state law says you must have access to your property?
It's unclear whether, it's not in the documents at any rate to reflect that. You know, and I don't want to speculate what it could be, whether it was a long existing, what we'd call prescriptive easement, where somebody uses it over time and they were just formalizing it. I don't want to speculate how it comes up, but it's not spelled out in that nineteen ninety-four agreement why they entered into a written easement.
Okay.
So, Chris, you talk about two easements being atop each other. Is there precedence of one or the other? You know, if there's a conflict, I mean, how does this get resolved?
Well, there really shouldn't necessarily need to be a conflict, because the, to the extent that the city has an easement, it has a thirty-foot roadway easement over lots A and B. To the extent that that easement would ever be used, it would provide the public access over the west thirty feet of those lots. So the owners of lots C, D, and E could continue to use that easement as a public easement. Really, what the, what the private easement does is it makes it three feet wider. It has a maintenance agreement attached to it, saying the owners of lots C, D, and E are responsible for maintaining the full length of the easement. And should the city at some point say, we don't want the right of way over Lever Street, lots C, D, and E would maintain that private right of access. But as far as is one superior to the other? Not necessarily. The easement, you know, easement that the city has or that's dedicated to the public would allow potentially construction of a road if that were ever desired, but that's really about it.
Well, good hypothetically, is I can't see them doing this, but, you know, the owners of lot C, D, and E basically take the public easement, road easement, and build a road. Is that something they can do?
They would need your consent to do that as an easement holder, so I think they'd need to come to the city and do that. But yes, I mean, if that's something that the city wanted to agree to, they could absolutely do that.
And that's kind of where I was getting the question, is what happens if one easement holder wants to do one thing, the other easement holder objects to it? And how does that resolution happen?
Well, if that were the case, I mean, there would probably be just a private dispute between these parties. So that would be something they'd have to resolve independently. If one person wanted to use an easement in a way that might be adverse, you know, an example would be what if the owner of lot C put up a barricade right at the border of lot B and B and C? Well, that would probably deny the easement rights to lot D, and then they could get into a dispute, and, you know, lot D would probably likely prevail that they have a right of access over lot C. So that's not necessarily uncommon, that people have easement disputes. It's actually, you know, pretty common.
I guess, and that's good. I mean, it's not directly what my question was. My question was, you know, with the city as the holder of the road easement and lot C, D, and E having, or I guess lot C and D having that easement over our easement. If they wanted to build a road, we said no, or we wanted to build a road and they said no. I mean, who controls the use of that property, I guess what it comes down to?
Well, if that were the case, let's say the city wanted to build a road and there were some objections. You know, this is a, the prior easement, the first easement that was established is that public road easement. So that easement was established prior to this, and it dedicates a portion of that lot to the public. So I would certainly, in that case, say that the city would have the right to improve and maintain that if it wanted to.
Thank you.
If it were the other way around, and the property owners wanted to build that, that would be something that the city would have to say yes or no to.
And that is, why is that?
Because there's thirty, thirty feet of it that's dedicated to the public for road purposes. So as, that's something that just exists over these lots in their legal description, that the west thirty-three, thirty feet is dedicated to public for road purposes. So the city has a certain, not ownership interest, but they have property rights interests in that. And in addition, so the city would have the option of saying, you know, yes or no to certain things to maintain their own property rights.
Jack, we've had quite a few communications with Ms. Wilkins and police and Cody Brack. But we haven't seen much, I think council hasn't seen much communication from the owners of lots A and B. What, Jack, do you know what their perception on this is?
I've had discussions with both of those owners. Lot B is owned by Arlen and Beverly Merkel. They said they really didn't care either way really what happened. They said, you know, it's been used as a path, a street for, since the nineteen ninety-four dedication and probably even before that. A little bit more historical perspective. The house on lot E appears by the county records to be the first home that was built. So it's at the end of that road. The county records show that that home was built in nineteen sixty-seven. I want to go back and just diverge a little bit, too. The name Lever Street comes from the fact that that's on the county grid, on the city grid system and the county's grid system. So anything that would fall on that line would be named Lever Street. We actually have a couple of other segments of Lever Street throughout the city. So it was named Lever Street. How it got assigned and addressed without a public street, I cannot answer that question. Getting back to comments with the owners, the Merkels appeared to be ambivalent whichever way what happened. They didn't. They didn't express a real concern either way. The owners of lot A, I think, have a little bit more uh concern about that. Uh, they were complaining about vehicles tracking mud on the road and uh certain little uh nuances or nuisances that they felt were occurring by use of this. Uh, I think they also were looking, hoping to build a garage on lot A. But uh, they, they were, they were hoping that lot A, that that property could be returned to them. I told them that vacation was technically an option, but it probably would not be considered uh due to precedents and the fact that it probably really serves perhaps no public purpose that we could prove. And that there were some issues overriding that with other easement issues from the perpetual holders of lot C, D and E.
Well, I, again, it seems to me that, that, that one of the roots of the problem is, you know, back to this delivery issue and, and how others find these homes. Um the, getting Google to correct their maps uh seems like that, that at least take care of the GPS um, which mostly deliveries go by. Um, I, I, I know the mail, the mail delivery has no problem. They know exactly where these homes are at. But uh certainly the package delivery and other delivery services have that issue. Cause to this day, Google still takes drivers down one ninety-fifth, the east, the east front to this road. Um, but I think once that gets corrected, I, I think that's going to make a lot of things clearer in terms of discussion on what, what to happen. Cause put, to me, put, putting a, putting, you know, another street sign at east front and, and Lever Street. And you, you know, you can't drive down that trail anymore. It's, it's, it's so overgrown. And, you know, we don't want to have delivery drivers going down that, that stretch.
I've driven down it.
Not to mention it's, it's dirt. It, it, and it's, when it's wet, is, is rarely wet. It's not nowhere near a road, so. Yeah, I'm sorry, Shelley.
No, that was Suzanne. I've driven down it, um, and the GPS took me down it. Um, I didn't have any problem. It was wet. It was, there was snow. I had a little issue finding it because the snow was plowed. Um so I had to drive over a little bit of clouded snow, but um, it was, it was fine, but they, they had just cleaned it up too and picked up leaves and branches. So I think we should pave it or gravel it and put the sign back. I agree with Shelley.
But it's not a road and why would we spend money on it when there's already access to it off one ninety-fourth? Why, why would we spend money on that?
Because we spend money on lots of streets and um.
But there's already access to it. I mean, your concern about saving taxpayers' money and not and concern about snow plowing a cul-de-sac, but you're fine spending money on this?
Yeah, because that's what the residents want. That's their stuff and Chris said it's a public easement, so.
Public easement, not road. It is not a road.
But it was set up to be a road.
It may have been set up, there may be a rose easement on it, but it is not a road. It is an access. It is not a city's street. I have no problem with people using it. I have no problem with people driving up and down it. I have no problem with people walking it. Uh, there's no question in my mind whether there is or not an easement on it. There is, they have access to it. But it is not a city street.
I still agree with the residents and with the, with Shelley on this issue.
Is there any further, any further motion? Or none, Mr. Nelson, can you take roll call vote?
Uh, can you, uh, can you re um uh recite the motion again?
Chris, you have it?
Uh, the motion was made by Councilmember Beck and the motion was to put a sign off of East Front Boulevard uh indicating it was Lever Street and provide maintenance uh over the public road portion of, or the public road easement portion of, of Lever Street uh via graveling of it. Is, is that a correct statement of the motion, Councilmember Beck?
Uh, no, I just wanted to make a motion to have the sign put back up and to leave the public portion uh public and have lot E, D and C maintained as it is in their agreements.
That, that's what I, that's what I recall in Shelley's motion.
All right, and uh with, with that, I would just state that I don't, I don't think we can do anything that creates um you know, sort of a, a city obligation on behalf of lots C, D and E to maintain it. They have, they have their private agreement as Councilmember Beck stated, but I don't think the, the city can uh um, can affirm or extend their obligations beyond their private agreement.
Um, and then one thing just to add, just so we all understand, the, the dirt, the, the unpaved portion of, of that stretch is north of one hundred ninety-fourth. Um, the, the property owners, C, D and E got together and, and years ago paved the, the, the southern portion of that. So, so from a, any kind of maintenance discussion, I, I just want to throw that in there. I know it's not part of the motion, but I just want to make sure we understood that. Yeah, I'll ask more time. Is there any further discussion? If not, Mr. Nelson, can you take roll call vote?
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mundell.
Nay.
Mayor Voss.
Nay, and that motion fails. Um.
Can I ask a question? If um, somebody would benefit from this, shouldn't they recuse themselves from this vote?
What are you implying Suzanne?
I'm implying that um, you're the owner of lot A or B, one of those two.
I am not. Who told, who, who told you that?
The resident um, lot D or E said that.
You know, our packet lists out precisely who owns all these lots? Is my name in that list at all? It is not.
Okay.
So you understand I do not have conflict on lots A, B, C, D and E?
Mr. Voss, Suzanne owns uh the five acre uh property that's on the corner of twenty-two and one hundred and ninety-fifth where it, it
It's just west lot A.
Over it.
Yeah.
His, his lot does, his lot does uh butt right up to the easement though.
And that's correct. So Jack, I know I already asked this, do we have any idea how long it's going to take for Google to make this fix? And I know they make these fixes and just surprised it's taken this long.
I don't know, but we will, we can redouble our efforts to see if they can get this change made ASAP. Uh, and if we don't have any results with them through the channels we're going, we'll see if there's alternate ways we can get them to revise their directions to these properties.
So I think, I think the, to get some resolution and, and, and help correct these problems, we, we obviously need Google to change, get those maps changed. I think we just need to wait a few more weeks and see what happens. And, and you said Carrie's making more inquiries?
She checked on those uh today and checked on them the middle of last week. So I think, I think what we need to do is take a different approach or maybe try a different avenue to get this done. Uh, apparently what they're not moving as fast as we'd like them to do to make this correction. So we'll explore if there's other ways that we can do something to expedite this.
I was just going to ask Chris if you had any experience in this or any suggestions?
Uh, working with uh Google Maps or anything like that, that's, that's yeah, that, that is not something that I've, I've done. I know they tend to move on their own timetable unfortunately, but uh I have not had a lot of work with them.
So I, I will say I would be in support of putting up additional signage for what would be named Lever Street at the end of, on the cul-de-sac of one ninety-fourth and at the corner oh, uh, Visetta and one ninety-fourth with a directional arrow pointing towards the cul-de-sac.
I, I think I understand what you're suggesting. I've seen it, I, I don't think around here, but I've seen other communities where they'll have that street sign and they'll have another one that says to Lever Street with, with an arrow. Not a huge, not a huge sign, the same, basically same size as our street sign.
Yeah, but if people are driving around and can't find it, well, there's identification marker. I, I do have sympathy with the homeowners that people are having a hard time finding their houses for deliveries for uh whoever drives out there. And I do support putting up additional signage in those lo- locations to help identify route, a route to their house.
I, I, I would agree with that. Do you want to make that in terms of a motion?
I can. Um, I would like, I'd make a motion to uh put up additional signage to help identify the access known as Lever Street uh at the end of the cul-de-sac on one ninety-fourth and a directional sign on the corner of Visetta and one ninety-fourth Avenue.
Okay, uh, is there a second to that? I'll second the motion, this question.
It, it may not be, this may not be a total solution, but this will help the residents. It, it's, may not be getting everything we want of it, but some signs are better than no signs. And once Google changes their directions, these signs will help.
I, um, as we're sitting here, I looked at GPS and if, if you make that turn off of Viking Boulevard at Isetta Street, Google takes you down one ninety-fourth to Lever Street to these homes. It doesn't take you back up. So, so they, they recognize the intersection of, or it, where the cul-de-sac ends there um at the dirt road. So um, once it, once, once any delivery driver turns off of Viking Boulevard, GPS is going to take them right to their house, right to their doorstep. So you're shaking your head, Shelley. I can, I can show it to you if you like, so.
It's
I'm, I'm just telling you, this, this is what, this is what Google's doing right now, so.
It's because today and yesterday, uh, resident had to have, uh, to she tried having uh packages delivered and she had to uh track down the delivery driver.
No, I understand it. What, what I'm saying is, once, you know, if there's a, if there's a directional sign at Viking Boulevard Isetta Street, it says to Lever Street and they turn there, GPS is going to take them right to the doorstep of these three homes. I mean, I'm, I'm look, you can try it on your phones too, you know, it, it's right there. Um, so I think, I think that's the help. And obviously, once Google changes this, corrects this, it's not going to be an issue anymore anyway. Cause it'll, it'll, it'll take, it should take them down one ninety-fourth.
I just hope they, they correct it soon for them.
I, I do too. I, I think, I think Jack's going to put more pressure on them. Um, I, I don't know. I don't think he would listen to us as council members, but you never know. You know, I, I know this has been changed before, so it, it, it can be done. It's just why they're not doing it after three months of requesting, I'm not sure, or two months or something.
Steve, it, it might be a beneficial thing to do for the council to pass a resolution requesting Google to make this. Uh, this is more things that we can submit to them to get them to pay attention to our request.
I'll, I'll make a motion um to amend Brian's motion to uh add a, a, a formal resolution from, from the city council to have Google correct um mapping errors. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, to the motion to table, is there any discussion? And that, I'm sorry, let me correct it. Motion to amend, uh, is there any discussion? Okay, uh, with that.
Could I add one, Steve, could I, could I add one more thing on the signage? Would you want to try and put a sign up at the intersection of Isetta and Viking Boulevard? Uh, just below the Isetta Street.
We're just considering a motion to amend right now.
I'm sorry.
So we'll go back to that though. Uh, is there any further discussion on a motion to amend? Hearing none, Chris, could you take roll call vote?
Councilmember Urkel.
Nay.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mundell.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. Uh, the motion to amend passes, so back to the original motion now as amended. Uh, Jack, did you want to restate what your request was?
Yes, I think we had requested to install a sign at Isetta and one hundred ninety-fourth and at the end of the cul-de-sac at one hundred ninety-fourth. We want to consider putting a sign at Viking and Isetta. We can put that sign just right under the Isetta Street sign uh, which would give traffic
With the direction to Lever Street?
Correct.
Brian, wasn't that part of your motion?
I just had the two, one at the cul-de-sac, one at Isetta and one ninety-fourth, but we certainly could add a third.
Oh, okay, I, I misunderstood.
I just had the two, do uh, do we need to amend the motion to include a third?
Yes.
I'll make a, an amendment to my motion to include a Lever Street directional sign at Isetta and Viking Boulevard.
Is there a second to the motion to amend? I will second the discussion.
I actually have a dilemma. So you say it's not a street, it's not Lever Street, but now you're putting up signs saying it is Lever Street. You guys are totally flip flopping in my mind. Correct me, please.
Oh, Lever Street is how, it's their private road. The access is an easement.
Suzanne, I, I, I totally get your point and, and I agree. It is, it, 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 it's a little bit hypocritical what we've been talking about. Um, but I think what the problem is, is these three homes with their addresses have established an address that I, you know, I don't think we'd want to monkey with in terms of trying to change it or, or trying to call the driveway off. But, but you know, a lot of times something like this, they would have addresses of one hundred ninety-fourth or, or something weird like that. And I don't think we want to do that at all. So, so I, so I think the copper, you know, the compromise is the, is the uh and it doesn't necessarily have to be a city's street. and it doesn't necessarily have to be a city's street sign at, at the end of the cul-de-sac either. It just could say, you know, you know, Lever Street and that's it. Or have the three addresses on one sign with a directional to, to the right, you know. Whole idea is, is to get somebody to find these homes, right? So.
Yep, something to help identify.
So is there any further discussion on a motion to amend? Hey, on the second motion to amend, uh, Mr. Nelson, can you take roll call vote?
Councilmember Urkel.
Nay.
Councilmember. Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mundell.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye, and that motion passes. Uh, now back to the original motion, which if I read, if I remember this right, is to restate it, is to put directional signs for Lever Street at Isetta and Viking, at Isetta and ninety-fourth, and at the end of the cul-de-sac. Like, everyone agreed it, I just want to make sure I got it all straight. I didn't write it down, so.
And that would also include uh Jack's resolution.
Correct.
Which, which was?
Um, asking Google to correct uh their maps, a formal resolution from the council.
Thank you. I gotta start writing all this down. That would be it. So now we all, so we're all understanding what the motion we're voting on right now. I don't have, we're all good? Okay. Any further discussion on this motion tonight? Hey. Mr. Nelson.
Councilmember Urkel.
Nay.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mundell.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye, and that motion passes. Uh, we hear back about the Google aspect. Um, I should close this issue for a while. Or, or Jack, does that complete your, your section?
That's correct.
Yeah, on the staff report.
Uh, the only thing that I have to add tonight, uh, in addition to our discussion we had about the live in-person meetings, is that the Bison are back at Cedar Creek. So if you want to see what their programs they're offering there, go to their website. They've got a pretty good itinerary of uh the best viewing spots, where to go, but they are back for the third year, the fourth year.
What website is that?
The Cedar Creek, University of Minnesota Cedar Creek Ecosystem and Scientific Reserve. I'll send you the link if you want me to.
Yes, please. That was long.
Okay. Anybody else want the link?
Why don't you send it to all council?
Okay.
Anything else, Jack?
That's it.
Hey, on the council reports, uh, Brian.
Oh, we had a EDA meeting where we uh, of course, discussed the uh RFP. Um, we discussed the uh TIF resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh one, which would be for Aggressive Hydraulics. And EDA put their support behind it. And we got to meet uh the new AC RED Economic Development Director, uh Samantha Markham. She replaced uh Jack Hill Hyder. And she gave us a little presentation of uh her background and other areas where she is hoping to help both the county and the city in particular. And there's some Q and A back and forth with her and EDA and uh I hope good things will come with a partnership with her. Um, this Thursday, we, I potentially may have a Highway sixty-five coalition meeting. It's been canceled twice the last two times, so we'll hope it's not canceled this time. But uh, other than that, uh, I guess uh have a great Memorial Day weekend, everyone.
Hey, Shelley.
We did not have a May meeting, so I have nothing to report. Have a great weekend.
Suzanne.
Okay, well, I think since the last meeting, I had a Booster Days meeting and everything's kind of on go. There's, I think they're still looking for um sponsors for the medallion hunt, um food trucks. They're looking for en- entertainment. Um, they didn't have a band as of yet. I'll have more next month. And then I had an airport meeting and uh just because of some family emergencies, I don't have my notes handy. So I'll just report on next meeting on that one too.
Yeah, good. Um, I don't have anything other than uh, uh, we've got the kickoff, the summer weekend coming up and uh uh for those who are gonna be on the lakes and uh and outside, I hope everyone stays as safe as they can and enjoy the weekend and, and uh into our uh, of, of maybe a real summer here compared to what we've had, so. So looking forward to that. And, and with that, that is all I have tonight. So I will take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made a second. Uh, Mr. Nelson, can you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Mundell.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye, and that motion passes. Our meeting's adjourned. Uh, thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.